Good afternoon. I would like to welcome you to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Tuesday, August 3rd. Time is 5:30. Lena, would you please take the role?
Bowling?
Here.
Here. Jacobs?
Here.
Yolkish?
Here.
McElroy?
Here.
Polensky?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Stacker?
Here. Thank you. Next item is the approval of the minutes from July 20th.
Stevens must approve.
I'll second it.
Motion is second. Any changes? If not, would you please signify by saying aye to approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Okay, next item, citizen appearance. Is there anyone on that is here for not an item on the agenda?
I don't believe so, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move on to council liaison committee member reports. Anything to report? Okay, hearing none. I will, I will say at this point, there will be a follow-up from the Colonial Club at our next meeting, our next meeting in August, based on a referral. They will be giving us a report as requested. Okay, we'll move on to...
Mr. President, I believe Alder Crumbie is looking to be recognized.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have one thing to report on. This coming Thursday, there's gonna be, it's gonna be National Night Out at Cannery Square, so if you're able to make it from 5:00 to 7:00, it would be, I'm encouraging all of you to make it and spend time with our public safety guys and first responders.
Thank you. Ironically, it's in my report, and I think it's 5:00 to 8:00.
5:00, I thought it was 5:00, 5:00 o'clock, that's what I have on my schedule.
5:00 to 8:00 though, instead of 5:00 to 7:00.
Right, yeah. Did I say 7:00? Oh, I apologize.
No, that's okay. Sounds good. Yeah, I would very much encourage everybody to do that. Okay, unfinished business. Consideration, discussion, and possible action on the 2022-2031 Capital Improvement Plan. I would like to ask, in order to address the public and give the public a much more timeframe, I guess you could say, what we've been doing in the past, for those of you that are on to discuss this, we've been limiting it to 15 minutes. And I would like to move into the presentation of community schools, if the council is okay with that, and then devote the rest of our meeting to the CIP. That way, we can have a longer discussion and no one would have to be cut off. So, is that okay with everyone? Okay. So with that, and I apologize to the public, we will, we will definitely have more time to hear your comments and be able to respond much better than just limiting it to 15 minutes. Okay, we'll move on to new business. And tonight, we have a presentation, an update, from Jamie Racine on community schools. I would like to also welcome the school board, as they will be joining this somewhat rare occasion, where we're both together. And I would like to turn it over to Jamie.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. And thank you all of you for inviting us to share our End of Your Impact Report with all of you here tonight. Also want to express some gratitude as well to our, to our school board members that are here this evening and our district leadership that are on. There's a tremendous power in the partnership that we have between the city and the school district in supporting community schools. And having all of you here tonight really resonates that and highlights that. And so, thank you all so much for this time tonight. My team and I are on the call. There's a lot of Jamie Racine showing up on Zoom. I shared my link, sorry Sandy. And so, we, but we're all here to share a little bit of our story with you. And so, each of my team members, I will invite you to unmute your video at this time, and then we will go through and sort of each take a piece in explaining a little bit about what community schools is, as well as the impact that we've been able to have this past year in our work. So I first want to start with some recognition and gratitude to the team members that have made this possible. I want to share some gratitude for Andrew McKinney, Lisa Goldsberry, and Bobby Finn, who started this work with us earlier this year and then moved on for other opportunities. Congratulations to Shanika Moss and Tanisha Nguyen, who have completed their first school year in this role here in Sun Prairie. Eternal gratitude to Stacy Darga for her leadership. This year, she took on some additional responsibilities as our community schools' site coordinator, peer mentor, to help support our new team members, which brings us to our newest members of our team today, which is Brian McKenzie and Rea Solomon, who just started with us at the end of June. And so, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Rea to share a little bit about what community schools does.
Hi, everyone. I'm Rea Solomon. As Jamie said, I'm the newest member of the team or one of the newest members. And I'm the site coordinator at Prairie Phoenix Academy. And I'm gonna start us off by just reviewing what a community school strategy is. And what it is, is a strategy that coordinates relationships and resources through a public school and accelerates equitable outcomes in health, education, and employment. And part of that strategy is partnering with stakeholders to create the conditions students, families, and neighborhoods need to thrive. And community schools are actually a equity strategy as well. So this is a quote that comes from the Coalition for Community Schools. And "Community schools are a comprehensive and effective equity strategy because they pay attention to both academic and out-of-school factors that influence student learning and development. They understand that developing the whole child involves working in multiple developmental domains that interact with each other: physical and psychological safety, healthy lifestyle, intellectual development, a sense of belonging and self-efficacy, and positive peer and adult relationships." And Sun Prairie currently has five community schools. Three of those are elementary schools, Westside, CH Bird, and Northside. There's one middle school, Patrick Marsh, and one high school, Prairie Phoenix Academy. And then Brian is gonna talk some more about our specific vision and mission in Sun Prairie.
Thank you, Rea. Hi, my name is Brian McKenzie. I am the other new person on board. My site is Patrick Marsh. And what drives our Sun Prairie Community Schools, our mission? To inspire people to act and to create equity and a sense of pride for all members of the community. And our vision is to be the most family-driven community resource that focuses on developing the whole person through collaboration and strong partnerships. What drives our Sun Prairie Community Schools? Number one goal, improve academic achievement for all students. Two, to reduce student chronic absenteeism by helping with transportation via taxi vouchers or the district vans. Number three, to increase family connectedness to the school and the community by creating parent leadership panels and also having family and community engagement events. And now, I'm gonna pass it back over to Jamie Racine.
Thank you, Brian. Yeah, so Brian was sharing a few examples, and we're gonna get into the nitty-gritty and the numbers here in just a minute. But I want to ground you all in the four pillars that support successful community schools. These four pillars come to us from over 20 years of research nationwide on this strategy. So number one, integrated student supports. Those basic needs, access to health, different options that support our students in that way. Expanded and enriched learning time and opportunities, so out-of-school learning options. You'll see some of the neighborhood work that we have involved with that. Active family and community engagement, so adult learning opportunities, as well as creating pathways for leadership and learning. And collaborative leadership and practices. The support of our community schools comes from, each site has their own site leadership team that comes together to talk about what's going well and where we can continue to add more things to support the students and families in the neighborhoods that that school serves. And you'll, I know that some of you serve on our site leadership teams as well, so I want to thank you for your service there. And you'll see tonight that our impact report follows each of these four pillars. So we want to showcase how we've made impact in our community over this past year in each of these four pillars. What each of our community schools puts in their four pillars is based on a community assessment that looks at the needs and the assets of that specific neighborhood or neighborhoods within Sun Prairie. You can see our elementary school site assessments that were just completed this spring. And our secondary schools are working on updating those assessments this upcoming fall. And so, you'll see the trends and what we, the programs that we apply really parallel what the community says is most needed in that area. So at this moment, I will turn it over to Shanika Moss to tell us more about our first pillar, integrated student supports.
Hello, everyone. I am Shanika Moss. I am the site coordinator over at CH Bird Elementary School. And these are our basic need support systems. So all five of the community school sites are refrigerated, and we thank, we are thankful for the donation from the Sun Prairie Emergency School, I mean, from, sorry, Sun Prairie Emergency Food Pantry. And the impact of that is, we have a partnership with SP, the Sun Prairie Emergency Food Pantry, the Second Harvest, Loco Churches. And we also had over 15,000 of food donations. And also, we serve 188 families. And so, all of our schools also have a clothing closet, which my clothing, well, I didn't mention that my food pantry is called Hunger No Longer. We all have names for our school. And due to our clothing closet also that is existing at three elementary schools. Mine's is called Clothes With Love. And due to those donations, we have socks, underwear, shirts, pants, as well as shoes, boots, and winter gear. And we have served over 27 students. And our other basic needs, we served over 240 students and families, supported with hygiene and clean, cleaning supplies, transportation assistance, rent, utility assistance, furniture donations. We have been supported through our partners at, at the city with the Neighborhood Vaccination Clinic, with having 85 families, 85 people vaccinated.
All right, now invite Stacy Darga to the, to the floor.
Hello, everybody. I'm Stacy Darga. I'm the site coordinator at Westside Elementary. And so, one of the pillars is expanded and enriched learning opportunities. Of course, the school year was very different for us, but we did not let a pandemic stop us, if you will. So three of the sites, CH Bird, Westside, and Prairie Phoenix Academy, continue to offer their after-school programming, which is part of the Learning Center grants that we receive. But all three sites had to, you know, that fun word, that pivot word. We really needed to think outside the box and figure out, just like the school day did, we needed to figure out what after-school evening programming, event planning was going to look like. So it looked like so many different things. It was virtual, it was hybrid, it was in-person. And we're really, really proud of the impact that we had. As you can see on the next slide, I'm not going to read all five schools' data, but you can see that we served almost 150 students and almost 900 hours of programming was done in some way, shape, or form. So one of the goals that I think it was Brian read was really trying to address chronic absenteeism. And I think that this is pretty powerful. Our after-school program here at Westside is called Kids Achieve Together. You might hear me call it CAT. And we can show that last year, last year was tough. It was tough for most of the schools with virtual learning and attendance, right? But my CAT kids wanted to be at school, even if that might be virtual. And so, the CAT kids here at Westside had a 51% higher attendance rate than children here at Westside who were not in the CAT program. And that's because that they know, right, if I'm gonna come to CAT, or even if I'm logging on into the CAT virtual classroom, because believe it or not, we had one of those, I need to be at school during the day, right? This is Darga and my classroom teacher are gonna chat, and she's gonna know if I'm at school and I'm at school in time. And so, I want to be a CAT, and so I'm gonna come to school. So really neat that we can just have that whole extended school day and that, that nuances, that there's not really a difference between school day and after-school. So we also, many of you know, Westside has always offered adult evening programming, from GED classes to adult ESL classes to grief share support series. Again, we needed to really think about what that was gonna look like this past year. And really proud of the work we did with our partners, that we were able to take three of those courses and move those to virtual. And so, you can again see that we served almost 70 adults with a different type of programming. I think one of the, if there is a benefit of COVID, is that it showed us we can do some of this virtually. So I do believe that for, especially for adult programming and these types of classes and series, virtual will be an option. So on those cold February nights where you don't want to come out of your house to come to Westside to attend your adult ESL class, you can Zoom with the class and the instructor. So I do believe that that will always be a piece, but in-person's always better, right? So moving on to a really neat project that happened, you might have seen this in the Star. Some of you might have been at the groundbreaking last fall. This was a collaboration with three of our community schools, so Westside, Prairie Phoenix Academy, and Patrick Marsh. So the land of Patrick Marsh is owned and operated by Groundswell Conservancy. And Westside has always partnered with Groundswell Conservancy. Matter of fact, they've come and helped us build bat houses. We have a DNR trail camera out there at Patrick Marsh. And they approached us pre-COVID about working with a sculpture artist to actually create this interactive sculpture that would be placed out in Patrick Marsh. And so, our Westside kids came up with five designs, kind of 3D-ish, but more like with paper clips and things like that. And those five designs, one of them was a bird. And those five designs were taken to the Prairie Phoenix Academy students, and they refined it down, and they saw a bird, and they're like, hey, our mascot is a phoenix. How cool would the sculpture be to be a phoenix? And the student at Prairie Phoenix Academy, who actually helped, worked hand-in-hand with the sculpture artist to make it happen, was a Westside Wildcat. So that was really awesome. So Don, the sculpture artist, then created, you can see in the middle there, this interactive sculpture. I invite you to go out to Patrick Marsh and take a walk. Those bottom prongy things, you are invited to weave weeds and flowers through them as a sign of kind of letting go of the past. And then, late fall, early winter, we are gonna have a kick-in bonfire out there, where we actually burn the sculpture, and we burn the things we want to let go of, and we start over again. So just a really neat, a neat experience for all of us to be a part of, even post-COVID, pre-COVID, and during COVID, we could make that happen. And now, I believe I turn it over to my amazing friend, Tanisha, who is at Northside.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tanisha Nguyen. I am the community site coordinator for Northside Elementary. I'm just super excited to be doing this work, to be part of this team. I just finished my first year. So I'm so excited to be part of a new community school, new Sun Prairie. It's just been a super awesomely awesome experience. And that's my work for 2021, awesomely awesome. And so, one of the most fantastic parts about what we do is our family engagement and interaction activities. And so, we just have a few photos here that kind of just can showcase some of the things we've done. We have a drive-in movie that we've done at Northside. We have the trunk retreat that may or may not be me in that bird costume. We have Ms. Darga in her costume as well with the students. The drive-by holiday parade that we did for families, just the donations at the firehouse, a Taste of Soul event that we did for Black History Month. So it's just really important that we work together as a community to bridge that gap between the school and family and students, and just ensure that family connectedness and that interaction. And so, mind you, we did all this in the midst of a pandemic. So I would say that makes us like pretty awesome, but we're all awesome. This just like takes the game. And so, we were able to host and co-host 30 family and community engagement events, virtually and in-person, and engage over 1,200 families. And so, if we can do that in the midst of a pandemic, imagine what we could do without that, you know, that boundary or that border in our way to be able to serve our families. So this is me. We did a Saturday Summer Spectacular through Northside, and this was our Juneteenth event that we did. And just real briefly, I just want to read my impact story. And so, this is me reading a book to some students regards to Juneteenth, just trying to understand the history behind it and the reason why it's such an important day for African-Americans. And it says, "During our Juneteenth event, it was such a fantastic time. It was inspiring to share the history and true meaning behind Juneteenth with families and the community. As facts were shared, it was awesome to hear many adults say they were unaware of the information shared. Truly a wonderful time with the community." And it really, really was, and I just enjoyed it so much. And so, again, that's just one of the major things that we do here with our work. We have our neighborhood outreach, so we have lunches at the Element and Rowan Prairie taking place in partnership with YMCA and the Neighborhood Navigators. Over 202 hours of outreach have taken place. We have the absolutely fantastic Lettuce Dream Community Garden, which is Missionika Moss's brainchild over at Baden Bird Park with over 42 hours of outreach. So you definitely have to swing by there and check that out because it is so awesome. And then, I'm gonna turn it back over to the awesome Stacy Darga, so she can share with her impact story about what, what this means to her.
Thanks, Tanisha. So I believe that COVID allowed me to take my role as a site coordinator deeper and to really walk side by side with many, many of our families in our community. So my impact story is, even in the heart of winter, we were out there supporting families. We've walked with these families through some of their toughest times, such as losing a loved one, and their best of times, such as finding out someone got a new job, or celebrating a birthday with cupcakes, and even a couple weddings, one of which already happened this summer and was absolutely amazing. We've truly become a family out in those neighborhoods. The families wait for my van and Mr. George Chavez's silver van to pull up on Mondays and Wednesdays. I know personally, I have grown so much as a site coordinator by being with these families, being out in the community, not requiring them to come into our building to actually build those relationships with them. And it's sometimes when they're, they're most vulnerable, right? And I just can't imagine, I think that I will always be out in the neighborhoods and always out in the community because for me, that has been such, such an important role during this time. But like I said, that is one of the benefits for COVID for me. And I think I'd now turn it back over to Jamie.
Thanks, Stacy. So our last pillar that we're going to speak on tonight is our collaborative leadership and practices. As I mentioned at the onset, this work at each site is really supported and guided by our site leadership team. This past year, we had 52 volunteers representing school staff, parents, grandparents, students, faith-based organizations, nonprofits, civic organizations, older persons, and school board members. These groups meet monthly to share, review, and reflect, as well as to plan and implement the work of their community school site in accordance with the community school model. Our site coordinators also participate on school leadership groups. So they're guiding coalitions, their equity teams, their school community organizations, or family leadership groups, and building culture teams. I would also be remiss if I didn't also honor that they also serve on many different civic organizations and committees across this community as community leaders. We also have an executive team that supports our community-wide practices. So we have eight outstanding volunteers representing many of those same groups. And we meet quarterly to do the same thing that our sites do, but on a community-wide scale. I'm also proud to serve on our cabinet as, with our district, supporting family and community engagement initiatives across the district, not just our community schools. Serving as a point of contact for community organizations, looking to connect with our district. I also have the privilege to serve on the Distress Property Task Force, our Housing Coalition, and collaborate with many city departments and committees, as so much of our work is integrated as we look at serving our community. One of those opportunities was this past summer. Equity is at the heart of the work that we do with community schools. A piece of that is creating space for community conversations around race, equity, and inclusion. We are proud to partner with the city and many city departments, as well as nonprofit organizations across our community, to organize spaces for our community to come together and have these conversations, as well as to participate in a training to help to really build more leaders in this work across our community. This work also would not be possible without our valuable partners and volunteers. This past year, despite a pandemic, 36 partners stood shoulder to shoulder with us in the work that we do in supporting our families. Over 1,000 volunteers provided nearly 1,600 hours of service to our community, and that is a value of over $45,000. And that is just outstanding. And I'm eternally grateful for every single one of those volunteers, those that are here on the call, as well as those that might be listening at home. Thank you so much for your time and your service. Community schools is not just a Sun Prairie thing. I want to remind all of us that we are part of the Wisconsin Coalition for Community Schools. That's reflected in these different communities across our state. We're also part of our larger network in the National Coalition for Community Schools. For our leaders that are on this call, both board members, as well as city council leaders and city administrators, there is, there are national networks for folks that serve in your role across this country in supporting community schools. So I encourage you to go to communiteschools.org and look up your role and connect with people that play a supporting role in the role in which you serve across this country. Hey, Brian, you want to invite everybody?
Yes, you can stay updated by going to our Facebook page, where we post all of our community schools' activities and events. And you can get involved as well.
Yeah, there's a lot of opportunities to visit us at work, out in the community. Every Tuesday, we are at the library for community school office hours. You can go by the Lettuce Dream Community Garden. We help out throughout the week with the YMCA's Meals for Kids programs at Rowan Prairie and the Element. And then, we did have some summer enrichment activities that happened this summer, which have now ended as summer school has ended. But we will have a lot of exciting opportunities this fall with after-school enrichment programs that we hope everyone will have a chance to come out and see at some point.
So thank you, city council, city leadership, Board of Education, and our school district administrators for your continued leadership and support in this very important work in serving our community. We love seeing you out, and we look forward to serving with you for the upcoming year as well.
Thank you very much, Jamie and team. Before we go on and offer up any questions, I would like to individually recognize the school board that is on. My apologies for not doing it at the beginning. With school board members, I believe Steve Bryn and Tom, I'm not sure if there's others. Would you please come on and introduce yourself?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Steve Schrader, president of the school board. And Steve, we're also joined by Dave Hockstraw.
Oh, Dave's joining. Welcome, Dave. Okay, thank you very much, Steve.
And Karen.
Hello, Mr. Weber.
Hi, everybody. I'm Tom Weber with the school board. And I'll just mention that Karen Dietrich and Carol Albright are also on. So I think you have the full board on tonight.
All right. Okay, thank you. If anybody would, from the school board, would like to recognize or say anything? I do see Karen out there as Jamie. Okay, if not, we'll move on. Is, are there any questions that you would like to ask of Jamie or the team? Are there any questions that you would like to ask of Jamie or the team? I don't see any. Oh, Alder Crombie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Stacy had mentioned, I believe it was Stacy that had mentioned this, about the virtual adult programs. Before COVID, was there any kind of a waitlist for these programs? And now that we're going virtual, I imagine you don't have a waitlist for these adult programs.
Yeah, excellent question, Maureen. So I know for literacy, the adult ESL classes with our partner Literacy Network, they did cap that at fifteen because they wanted it to be, you know, kind of an intimate thing with one instructor. But because it was virtual, they had like twenty-seven, I think, in the class. So excellent question. And like I said, I do believe going forward, there will be a virtual aspect to all of our adult evening programs that we do.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alder Yokeish, please.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation and congratulations for all the wonderful work that you're doing for our community. Thank you for sharing all the data on the impact of the work of community schools, and we're just thrilled with the impact you're having on the community.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? I think the only other question that I had was around metrics and how do you measure the success? Everything I've heard is this is very successful. I know Brian spoke of like academic achievement. He spoke of absenteeism, of family connectivity. And then I saw where I believe absenteeism dropped, was it fifty-one percent? I wanted to say in one of the slides. So I see that there are positives in that. Are we measuring or do we have metrics where we're seeing how successful this program really is? I mean, I see it, but I guess you can't, if you can measure it, I guess that's even better.
Yeah, absolutely. No, that's a great question. And impact without data isn't really sort of measurable impact. And we're interested in making long-term, sustainable change. And so we will be publishing not only the data that was presented here, but also the site-by-site data that digs a little bit deeper into some of those impact questions that you're mentioning, Mr. President. And you will receive a copy of that once it is published. We also will be looking, many of the measurements, especially around academic success, because of COVID this past year, the measurements that were historically used were not implemented. And so as we move forward, that is something that we will actively be reporting on as well as we sort of come back into a more normal year, hopefully, knock on wood.
Okay, thank you. And the only reason I bring that up is I come out of the Deming learnings that you can't improve on what you can't measure. And so once we have metrics, then we can see what our improvement would be. Alder Jacobs.
I have a question, but first I'll kind of make a comment on what Steve said, if that's okay, which is I think that designing metrics is going to be a difficult thing to do. I think the testimony that we've heard tonight, while it may be anecdotal, is certainly convincing. And the fact that they have thirty-six community partners that believe in what they're doing and continue to do so, I think those are metrics saying that what they're doing is good work. And my question for you, Jamie, was going to be those thirty-six community partners, are they, where could you find who they are? Are those located on the website?
Yeah, well, once we re-hall our website, you will definitely be able to see them honored there, but they will be listed in our end of year report that you'll all be getting a copy of.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions out there? Okay, Jamie and team, thank you for a wonderful presentation, and thank you for all you do. This is very, very impressive. So keep up the great work.
Thank you so much, and thank you again for your time today.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to, before we move on actually, to get to the Ashley and Reiniger Awards question, I guess, for our city administrator. Since Alder Crombie and I are part of a team that is up for nomination, do we need to recuse ourselves from the vote?
I don't believe so, Mr. President, but that's up to you as to whether you can be impartial or not.
Rigged, rigged.
There's no legal requirement to recuse yourself.
Okay. Okay, so with that, we will get to next item, consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding the 2021 Ashley and Reiniger Awards. Recommended by our staff action is to recommend the committee of the whole make a motion approving the nominees for the 2021 Charles D. Ashley Award and the James J. Reiniger Award. So I would open this up to Mr. City Administrator, Erin.
Mr. President, we have a memo in your packet that outlines the awardees. There's a different process for each award, and so we'll start off with the James J. Reiniger Lifetime Achievement Award. The nominating committee is myself, Chris Murdis, who's on the call with you with Zoom, and Amy McCutcheon, who's also here. And so the three of us met and brought forward three nominations for your consideration. Ultimately, it's up to the city council to approve those awards or not. So that's the first award, James J. Reiniger. The second one that is often given at the same time but has different criteria is the Ashley Award. And the nominating committee is actually Chris Murdis, who's on the call, as I mentioned, but also the city council has the ability to offer nominees themselves. And so you're also asked for your approval on those as well. Just to go back through quickly, the James J. Reiniger Lifetime Achievement Award, there's three nominees. I'll read quickly the information that the nomination committee has provided you. The first is Barb Bailey. Barb was appointed to the Parks and Recreation and Forestry Commission in 2011 and continues to serve in this capacity. She is also the Parks Recreation and Forestry Commission liaison to the Sun Prairie Plan Commission. The second nominee is Joe Chase. Joe is one of the founders and current chair of the Friends of Sun Prairie Area History. Joe's a former mayor, serving from 2005 to 2011, former president of the museum board. Joe is known for his dedication and efforts to preserving Sun Prairie history and leads historic downtown Sun Prairie walking tours. And our final nominee is Al Geyant. Al was first elected to the city council in 2014, has served on the finance committee, personnel committee, transit commission. Al's also served as council president, community schools liaison, and chair of the ad hoc steering committee on transportation. He currently serves as the chair of the transit committee or commission and is an active member of the Sun Prairie Action Resource Coalition. So those are the three for the Reiniger Award. And then the Ashley Award, the three nominees there. The first is Marilyn Rufflin. Marilyn is the founder of Beam, which is Black Excellence Achievement Makers Awards, which held its third annual event in May as a drive-through parade. This year, over five hundred awards were given to Sun Prairie black scholars and adults, including staff, leaders, and parents, guardians. Marilyn also leads the Urban Sun Black Voices Book Club with Donna Mackey, which explores contemporary and historical works by African-American authors and promotes meaningful conversations about race. Marilyn is the first black school board member, having served two terms from 2015 to 2021. The next nominee is Rita Tubbs. Rita was recently announced as the anonymous $250,000 donor of the Wetmore Park Splash Pad. The Tom and Rita Tubbs Splash Pad and Playground is the first of its kind in Sun Prairie. Splash Pad opened on June 30th, 2021, and has already seen many visitors this summer with more to come for many years. And finally, Sunshine Supper. In the spirit of hospitality and community outreach, Sunshine Supper provides a free and nutritious meal for people living in Sun Prairie area every Monday evening who would otherwise go without. Throughout the pandemic, Sunshine Supper continued to provide meals to those in need. Using a drive-through model, Sunshine Supper continually serves three to four hundred meals each week. Until recently, Sunshine Supper was also providing meals on Wednesday evenings, thanks to the generosity of Patrick Dipola from Salvatoris. Additionally, Sunshine Supper was recently recognized as a food insecurity fighter by Madison's magazine's 2021 Best of Madison Editor's Picks. Hopefully, it provides you the information for your consideration.
Thank you, Erin. So I'll bring it back to the council. First, I'd like to thank the nominating committee for wonderful, bringing forward some very wonderful nominees. Put a lot of thought into that and picked some really good candidates. So I'll bring it back to the council. What's your pleasure? Pardon? Alder McElroy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't feel that there is anyone on that list that is not deserving. All six of those people, or all five of those people, and number six being Sunshine Supper.
Thank you. Alder Crombie?
I just wanted, for, some of you may not know this, but Barb Bailey, she was the executive director of the Colonial Club too for many years. I'm not sure what, how many years, but I just want you all to know that. And, you know, I agree with Alder McElroy. These are perfect people that we have nominated this year. These are good choices. So I can make, I'll make a motion that we approve these people.
Thank you.
McElroy, seconds.
So a motion of second. Elena, would you please take the role? Or any further discussion?
I was gonna say all but Geyant, but I guess he's already on the list.
Small-minded.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, Elena, would you please take the role?
Bowling?
Aye.
Crombie?
Aye.
Jacobs?
Aye.
Yokeish?
Aye.
McElroy?
Aye.
Polanski?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Stacker?
Aye. Thank you, and thank you again to the committee. Okay, now we're going to bounce back to unfinished business, and that is the consideration, discussion, and possible action on the 2022-2031 Capital Improvement Plan. And I would like to thank again those in the audience who have been patiently waiting. Hopefully, you've learned something from community schools and the James Reiniger Award and Charles Ashley Award in the process. So we'll bounce back to that. And I think Alder Yokeish, you had, we'll start, you had an amendment you said.
Yeah, I'd like to propose an amendment. Based on the recommendation from the Parks Recreation and Forestry Commission, I move to increase funding for the Smith's Crossing Shelter in the CIP for 2022 by $55,000. Cost estimates in the design process came in at about $405,000. The $55,000 would be $38,500 from park funds and $16,500 from borrowing. And if there's any questions, Kristin Grissom is here to answer any questions. At least I hope she is.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay. Okay, so let's, any other?
I have a question about that one, just because I don't know what page it's on. Are we allowed to use park funds in that capacity, that amount in that capacity?
That would be a good quick Kristin question. Kristin, did you hear that question?
I did, yeah. I didn't know if you were talking about Kristin Vanderquere, but I can answer that question.
Either Kristin.
So, yeah, so we can, the percentages, that project is split between park fund and borrowing. And so Connie had calculated that based off of population at the time the park was built, and then the population estimate at the time that the enhancements will be made. And then did a percentage to estimate the percentage paid by impact fees. So, yeah, so the project is budgeted, or what Alder Yokeish is proposing is the same percentage that was approved by finance for the original project budget.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, is there any other questions, changes? Okay, so let's go to the public, Maureen. You said you had some folks on, talk about Major Way.
I can't see if they are on here right now.
Elena can check. Yeah, I guess while we're checking, if there's anyone on to speak specifically on Major Way, I believe there was going to be some discussion. If you could take yourselves off of mute, please.
While we're looking for that, Elena, I believe there's, was there a vote on the amendment?
Not yet.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. Can you see anyone?
You may have to move them over to be in. Right, you don't have the capacity, right? So I don't know.
Mark is here.
Can we have them raise their hand?
Okay. Yeah, if anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand. I see Don coming on also. Right, yeah, the button. If you could, yeah, raise your, there's a button on your screen.
There's two that have.
Laura and... Okay, why don't we go with Laura? If you could take yourself off of mute, please.
Mr. President, we have a point of order. We have a motion currently on the table.
Yeah, let's vote first. Okay, so we have a motion of a second. Elena, would you please take the role?
Bowling?
Aye.
Crombie?
Aye.
Jacobs?
Aye.
Yokeish?
Aye.
McElroy?
Aye.
Polanski?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Stacker?
Aye. Okay, Laura, I think you're on.
Hello, my name is Laura Cantrell, and I live at 440 Major Way. I do want to just thank you for inviting us tonight and for the city planning the road work on our street. I think that's a great thing. As for the sidewalks, we only have twelve houses on this dead end, and the residents here are various stages of life and abilities. And I think as a group, we agree that we oppose the sidewalks. I understand it's important to make sure the residents and visitors are safe walking on our streets, but I don't think anyone feels unsafe walking here. It is a dead end, so there's no speeding, careless drivers trying to get through to go somewhere else. And unfortunately, the sidewalks are likely going to encourage unwanted access, increasing the foot traffic both to and from the aquatic center. You know, neighbors' yards being trespassed on. I think the money could be better spent on other projects that would benefit more people in the city instead of being a hardship concern for the residents who do live on this street. And I feel like we're losing more and more green space when it really doesn't seem necessary with trees being removed, grass gone, more concrete, more runoff. I just feel we should all be conscientious about preserving our environment and determining, really taking some time to determine what needs paved and what doesn't. I think if you want to make this street more accessible, thinking about putting in a cul-de-sac at the bottom of the street, that would benefit greatly our delivery drivers, our garbage collectors, snowplows. And, you know, on occasion, we have firemen and ambulances that need to get down the street, and that's sometimes difficult. But they're the ones that need the safe access. The walkers don't feel unsafe walking the street. So I know the city wants to use the money wisely, and I just feel there are other ways you could put that to work. And I, for one, strongly oppose the sidewalks. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Laura.
Thank you.
Okay, next person, Tim, and I'm sorry, is it Meier? Tim, would you take yourself off of mute, please, and state your name properly and your address, please? There he is. Okay. Hello? Would you please state your name and address, please, Tim?
My name is Tim Meyer. I live at 448 Major Way. I was wondering, what is the purpose for putting a sidewalk in on Major Way here? Hello?
Hello. Okay, I think, is Adam on? Adam Schleicher? There's Adam.
Yes, I'm here.
Did you hear the question, Adam?
Yeah, so, you know, this street is a, is a reconstruction project. You know, per our city policy, we place sidewalks on both sides of all streets that are, that are fully reconstructed. And the sidewalks are used, you know, for safe pedestrian travel throughout the city.
Okay, so the purpose is for safe pedestrian travel, is that correct?
That is accurate.
That, that is the only reason?
You know, when, when we are able to reconstruct a street, we can, we can narrow the street. And when we have sidewalks on both sides, but yes, the sidewalks are predominantly used by pedestrians.
Okay, and so that if there's sidewalks, then, then the pedestrians will use them, is that correct?
That has been my experience, yes.
Okay, well, that's, that's not the experience we have back here on Sunfield. I, I can point that, that's for certain. Down here in the, in the dead end, who would the safety be for? The people here that don't want sidewalks?
Is that question for me or for the city council?
It doesn't matter. You seem to be the expert. I'll go with you.
I don't really have an answer for that. I mean, any pedestrian in the city could be using that sidewalk.
No, it goes to a dead end, however. Now, I can tell you that there are people on Sunfield that walk their baby off the sidewalks down this way because it's more serene. And because the members down here are friendly and we talked to them, he's Nick, he works for Cardinal Heating, as a matter of fact. He lives over on Sunfield. And he walks down on our street with his baby because it's safe down here. So if, if safety is the only reason we're doing this, it's for the safety of whom is my question?
Okay.
And then if, then if I could go back, because the people here feel safe the way it is, with the road the way it is.
Okay, thank, thank you, Tim. Excuse me. Yeah, we can just make comments, but not get into a question and answer, I'm sorry. What I... Yes?
There are questions that haven't been answered about these sidewalks, not effectively, and that's one of them. Okay? You mean I can't, I can't ask questions?
What we can do is we can set up a separate meeting and we can have the questions asked of staff at the meeting. But here, we can just make comments, basically.
Okay.
But we...
Okay, but safety is the reason we're putting sidewalks in. Is that, is that what you guys understood?
Correct.
Okay. Now, as I understand that the alders there represent the people of their districts, is that right? I mean, that must be right.
Yes.
And as us being represented, there isn't one family on this block that wants the sidewalks put in. So as representatives, now, I'd like to ask if you have any representatives there saying, you do have, that you do have people in Sun Prairie outside of this area that want sidewalks there. But I highly doubt that that's the case. I don't think there are any people outside of Sun Prairie that care if there's sidewalks down here or not. Again, it goes to a dead end, which could easily be made into a cul-de-sac, which would benefit the city of Sun Prairie when their trucks come down here. So that they can turn around and not have to back into my driveway. And then, as Laura pointed out, there are the environmental aspects. Do we have the rain runoff capabilities for sidewalks? We get about 35 inches of rain a year here and about 52 inches of snow. Okay, something, something to think about, not to mention the, the trees that are gonna be gone. If we care about global warming, aren't trees and grass what we, what takes care of that, helps us with that, and we're eliminating that? That, that doesn't make sense to me. People are already trespassing against my neighbor's yard across the street going to the, going to the pool. It sounds like you wanna give them easier access to trespass on my neighbor Tom's yard. And if you want, I can take pictures and show them to you. Next, we got seniors on a fixed income here. Currently two, soon to be three and four, currently three, soon to be four and five, that will now be responsible for shoveling their lawn. Or shoveling their, their sidewalks, pardon me. And I don't think it's necessary to put that additional burden on these people. Now, we, of course, take care of each other on our block. But in the real world, if something was to happen to those of us that help out, they would, they would be on their own to take care of that. I don't wanna be responsible for them. Elaine Wading, my neighbor, she's headstrong. She still wants to do things on her own, and I don't wanna be responsible for her falling because she's trying to shovel or brush a little bit of snow or ice off the sidewalk. That's all I had to say. Do you have any comments back to me on that?
I wanna thank you, Tim. Any comments? Alder Jacobs?
Hi, Tim, this is Mike Jacobs. I actually directly represent you, Maureen Crombie and I, or the district in which you live. So I wanna share with you that on, on all my years in the council, there's only one time that I can ever remember voting against sidewalks. This is an exceptional case in which I'm prepared to vote against sidewalks unless, and there's two things that could change my vote and have me vote in favor of sidewalks. One is if we put a cul-de-sac there. That's one reason. The other one is if we decide, now, I should go backwards and tell you why I'm opposed to putting sidewalks here. Because as you had suggested, it would lend people to walk to the end of that street and access the pool, which they can't access from there. So I think it's a, it's a mistake to try to encourage people to go that way if we can't go. So the other, the other circumstance in which I would support sidewalks there is if we decided to indeed make a path to the aquatic center from that way. Okay? Now, as far as, I just wanna address some things that you said, though. As far as, you know, you're pushing that this, you know, the question about safety, I wanna let you know that we have faced this question of sidewalks many times. And, and here, those of us on the council, to my knowledge, none of us are experts, but let me tell you what the experts have said. The chief of police says sidewalks. The fire department says sidewalks. The EMS director and the former EMS director sitting right next to me says sidewalks. The city planner says sidewalks. Even our city economic development officer said sidewalks. So all the people who know the most about these say yes. Now, I was encouraged to hear you say that the neighbors, we all look after each other, and I'm very glad to hear that. But you said, well, you don't know the future. And I think that's what you have to realize that we're facing. That maybe all you people on this street right now don't want sidewalks, and I appreciate that. But now you're speaking for future generations not wanting them, because this road won't be redone for a long time. So I'm telling you, I will support this because of the idea of we're trying to discourage people from walking down there. But the circumstances in which I would change my mind is if indeed we made it a cul-de-sac or may get access to the aquatic center. And Tim, you can reach me if you wanna talk further about this, 'cause this, the CIP isn't gonna be a done deal tonight, so nothing that we say is, is in stone, okay? You can reach out to me or Maureen.
Well, as far as future generations, correct me if I'm wrong, but you guys don't represent the future generations. You're representing the people that live here currently, because you don't even know who's gonna live here in the future. Nobody does. And...
Tim, in that case, we should spend all the city's money today, 'cause we don't need it tomorrow. Right? I'm sorry, this is not a good time to have this kind of debate. Again, you can contact me outside of the, this is not a forum for that tonight. Feel free to contact me or Maureen. I'm happy to talk to you about it more, but you know what my position is.
So, okay, sir, it's, sir, Mr. Jacobs, it sure sounds like you're trying to shut me down. And I think I had some very valid points as to what you're doing there. I think you should represented that. You should represent those that are here. And as far as those people that say sidewalks, they don't just say sidewalks. They say, well, we need sidewalks because, not just because sidewalks. Nobody wants a sidewalk just to have a sidewalk. Anyway.
Okay.
Mr. Jacobs, can I get your phone number or do I have to look that up?
Thank you. I think, I think I heard where Alder Jacobs and possibly Alder Crombie will be in touch. Yeah, we won't be deciding tonight, but thank you very much for your comments. Okay.
Thank you for your time. Now that I know how these work.
Okay, Alder Crombie?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do agree with many things that Alder Jacobs has said. And also, the residents in that area have valid points. Typically, I'm always going to vote on the, on sidewalks. But in this case, I think we have to make an exception. If any of you, I don't know, I think some of you have walked down Major Way. And in the future, unless we, unless we shut down the aquatic center, there is no, there is no connectivity. There's, it's a dead end and there's just no connectivity to anywhere, because it would run right into the aquatic center. I think that this, you know, we, earlier this year, we received a letter from most of the citizens, I think almost all of them. And I know that I've walked down there. I think Alder Stacker has, Alder Jokish has walked down there. If anybody hasn't walked down there, I would encourage you to walk down there. It's, and basically, I, I brought this up tonight because I was, I thought it was better if we discussed this tonight and maybe take out the sidewalks in the, for the project that starts on, in 2022. So instead of having to go to Public Works and then to go back to the council. So I wanted to bring it up tonight for that reason. I don't know if we can make a motion to, if I can make a motion to move forward with the, the project of Dover, Harvard, Major, Queens, and Ring construction with, that starts in 2022, and to keep everything that's, that we are doing except for to remove the sidewalks.
I think you could do that with an amendment. Would you like to make an amendment?
Yes, I would like to make, yes. I would like to make an amendment to remove the sidewalk or to, to continue or to, to do the, the project. Because everybody in that neighborhood does want this project to be done. They just don't want the sidewalks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so there's a motion?
Can I have the motion read back, please?
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm trying to catch this one, Maureen, so it is basically to continue on with the project without sidewalks on any of those streets or just Major Way?
Just on Major Way.
Just Major Way.
The whole road of Major Way or just the arm that is the dead end? Because it does connect to other streets.
It's just the dead end portion?
It's just the dead end plate, the dead end.
So from Sunfield down?
Yeah.
So south of Sunfield. Then I'll second that motion. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Alder, Alder Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I recall several of these conversations with cul-de-sacs. We seem to come up against one every year, and every year we vote in favor of it, regardless of the number of houses, whether it's three houses, 12 houses, 26 houses. There's plenty of these in District Two that we have faced up against as well. I will be voting against this. I do believe that we're going to continue on and for the reason that there are people walking down there. They are walking to get to the aquatic center. I'm sorry that they're not going down Bird Street. That is a very busy road. And if they clearly feel safer being on Major Way than walking along Bird Street. So if we can provide this safer access to get to a public area, I am all for that. And I instead would actually like to look at how we can make a little additional sidewalk to connect to the aquatic center over removing sidewalks, if that would help connectivity for pedestrians and cyclists.
Just a clarification, this is not the cul-de-sac, though. This is a dead end.
I, I understand it's a dead end at this time, but we've also treated dead ends the same way, cul-de-sacs.
Alder Jacobs and then Alder McElroy.
So I agree with the, the sentiment of Alder Stevens, but here's, here's the difference, and you already pointed out, this is not a cul-de-sac. And you heard me say a moment ago, if it were a cul-de-sac, I would support sidewalks, but it isn't. So here's the problem. If you didn't know this, Teresa, you can't actually get to the aquatic center from this street. That's, that was the point I was trying to make, unless, as the two people pointed out who, who called in tonight, unless you're gonna trespass on people's property. And when Maureen and I were down there investigating, we saw even then, there's fences at the aquatic center that prevent you from doing so. So my opposition to sidewalks is simply because we're leading people to a direction of somewhere they cannot go. And that's why I'm saying the two ways you can get me to change my mind is, one, make it a cul-de-sac, or, two, make an avenue by which you can get to the aquatic center. Now, I'm not proposing either one of those things, but I'm saying that's the way you would get me to change my vote. So I want you to understand that. I think right now, you're, you're encouraging people, if you put sidewalks, to walk to a place that they can't get to. And only, they can get to it only if they trespass through people's property.
Thank you for the clarification, Alder Jacobs.
Alder McElroy?
Thank you, Mr. President. We are making a decision that is going to last about 50 years. We have an ordinance in this community that sidewalks go in when we completely redo a street. And if we're gonna have an ordinance like that, then I think we follow the ordinance. Either that or we get rid of the ordinance, because I feel like every time a street gets redone, there are people out there that don't want sidewalks, and we go over it and over it and over it again. We want connectivity in this community. Just because I live on one street doesn't mean I don't walk on other streets in the community. Thank you.
Alder Crombie?
Alder McElroy, have you ever walked down Major Way?
No, I have not.
Okay, because 50 years from now, I guarantee you that there will be the aquatic center there. And there is no, that's, that's what you would walk into. So there's no connectivity in that area. It's a dead end to nowhere.
Thank you, Alder Crombie. I will make it a point to walk down Major Way. But I still feel that it's important for us to follow the ordinance or get rid of the ordinance. Because every time this comes up, we have people out there that don't want sidewalks. Thank you.
Alder Jacobs?
So to, to that point, so there, we actually, potentially, what Alder Stevens was suggesting, I just wanna point out two different things that, so as, as, the amendment is one thing, but if we're gonna decide to make it connectivity, that's a whole nother question, and that would have to be raised, certainly not tonight after a great deal of study from Adam. So I'm just, so right now, we just have one question, which is whether or not to remove the sidewalk under the current circumstances. I just wanna make sure that we're all clear.
Alder Yocish?
And like most of us, I went and drove over there and took a look at the area. And also, and so I, I understand what everybody's talking about. But when I've seen the arguments from neighbors, it was the same arguments I've seen, to be perfectly honest, last summer with my neighborhood, when they had the sidewalks redone. The trees go away. I, you know, I liked the non-sidewalks, but I'm still compelled by the argument of accessibility. I mean, if you, for future, as Alder McElroy states, in the future, if somebody living in that area wants to get to someone else, they need to have side, somewhere else, they need to have sidewalks to get to the other sidewalk somewhere else. So I didn't see anything when I drove over there that I found particularly compelling, but I'm certainly open to other points that people wanna make on this one.
Okay, do we have any other, other comments? Okay, so Elena, would you please read the role? And a vote of yes is to remove the sidewalks from Major Way from Sunfield to the end.
Bowling?
No.
Crombie?
Aye.
Jacobs?
Aye.
Yocish?
No.
McElroy?
No.
Polanski?
No.
Stevens?
No.
Stacker?
Aye.
Aye.
And that fails three to five.
Okay. So it looks like sidewalks will remain in, in Major Way. Okay. Is there anyone else on wishing to speak on any other portion of the CIP? Mark or Don? Do you see anybody? Alena?
There were no other hands raised.
Pardon?
No, no additional hands were raised, taking recognition, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Alder Stevens?
I am wondering how many more meetings we are going to allow for opportunity from the public to participate in this. I don't know that we've advertised it aside from just putting it in the agenda, and I'm also curious to know when we may start inviting public in, if that is a barrier to receiving some feedback.
Okay. Good questions. We will have at least next meeting, two weeks from today, to invite the public virtually. And as far as bringing the public in, making, I'll be making an untimely, probably, referral tonight to see what that picture would look like before we do that.
Okay.
Alder Jacobs?
I don't, what I want to say doesn't, I don't think goes under referrals, but based on the sidewalk conversation we just had, I would like to ask the Parks Department and the Engineering Department to study and find out the advisability, the viability, and the cost, if indeed a sidewalk's going in to connect it to the Aquatic Center. Okay? Because right now, I think that it's a mistake to leave people down a sidewalk that goes to nowhere, which they think it goes to somewhere, and they're going to try to get there, and they're going to continue to trespass on these people's property.
So you, you would want that to be a referral later?
Well, I'm not sure it counts necessarily as a referral, just because we're in the process of this, but I'd like to, I'd like to see that presented.
Okay. Aldo Yokeish, did you hear a hand up?
I guess I just have a question for the city administrator as far as the overall CIP. Is there some kind of financial data that, from this, that, that we can determine the overall impact on property taxes, or however you want to look at that, as a whole? And I'm not sure I'm asking that question clearly.
No, that's all right. So for 2022's projects that'll fold into the budget, so you'll see that, you know, as part of the budget process, the impact of the capital projects and the operating budget. For later years, we obviously won't know the operating budget, but we can give you a projection of what the, the impact would be, which is really the financial management plan, which the council has seen. So we've stayed, kept the capital projects in line with that financial management plan. So if we follow that same path, the operating budget and the capital projects plan, we should end up where we projected we would be over that five-year financial management plan.
Which you showed us earlier, and so you're saying what we have here is in line with that financial.
That is correct.
I think that answers my question. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions before we move on from the CIP? Okay. Next item, a report of the council president. As you probably saw from Jeff Robbins, and I think everybody's done a very good job tonight as far as our closed captioning, we want to make certain that we speak into the microphone and enunciate as best we can. That will help both hearing among the dais, plus hearing for those at home and watching it later on. So make certain you speak into the microphone and speak clearly. Just kind of a recap, on July 22nd, some of us were able to attend a wonderful tour of Ashley Field and the in-progress Sun Prairie West High School, and I want to thank the school district for that great tour. The hard hat tour of the high school was phenomenal. I do have a construction tour booklet. If anyone would like to see what the final product is going to look like, I can pass it around, or if you want to look at it in between now and council, feel free to come up and, and take a look at it. Again, another great event, ribbon cutting at Talmar, Talamar this past week. A great senior living facility, again, is, has come to Sun Prairie, so it opens up the housing that we need for, for the seniors. Looking ahead, the McGovern's demo will start soon. I know you were looking for that probably last month, but apparently they found some additional unplanned asbestos that they had to remediate. They might continue to find it, if you don't see the wrecking ball hit it, but that is the reason for the delay. It was originally supposed to be the beginning of July. And Alena, on these next ones, I wonder if we could do a, a posting of a quorum, because as Alder Crombie pointed out this Thursday, from 5:00 to 8:00 in Canary Square is National Night Out. Please come and show your support. Should be a great event down there. We have an upcoming groundbreaking for Habitat for Humanity on August 18th at 3:00 p.m. If you have not gotten the invitation, or if you could check, the Habitat will break ground, and so that'll be moving forward. And then the Corn Fest Parade. I received an invite, but I apparently, when I asked if everyone has received an invite, apparently they only did it among members for some reason, or media center members. And so maybe Alder Jacobs, you got one too. But anyway, if you could put on your calendar, August 19th, which is Thursday, the day after the Habitat groundbreaking, we will be receiving, or just by virtue of this, marching in the Corn Fest Parade, if that's still a go at that time. We don't know. But we will meet, I'll send all the details out, but if you could just keep that timeframe open, I think it's around 6:00 o'clock, that, that evening, we will be part of that. So with that, I will move on to report of the city administrator.
Mr. President, thank you. There's a few items I just wanted to mention. One was with the Reininga and Ashley Awards. The presentation will be at our next meeting, so that'll be the August 17th. That'll be done at the city council level, so that'll be the presentation of those awards. All of the award, the nominees are aware that they'll be receiving the award, so feel free to mention it to them if you see them, or they may mention it to you, but I wanted to make sure that, that you are aware that they're, they're aware, and they're planning on the August 17th meeting to receive the award. Also wanted to mention that Parks, Rec, and Forestry is seeking feedback on a second location for an ice rink location, so residents can participate in an online survey, which can be found at surveymonkey.com backslash R backslash ice rinks 2022. So wanted to, to mention that. I also wanted to mention that the Pedestrian Safety Task Force will be participating in a town hall on Wednesday, August 18th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. They'll be addressing the following topics. One, it'll be an update on the work progress from previous town hall session, be discussing Vision Zero and what that means, be talking about communication and citizen engagement, future plans and goals, and question and answer session. Also, the task force has a new hub site where you can report safety concerns to the task force, review data and information, learn more about Vision Zero. So the hub site is a place where if you see something, you can easily say something. So please take a look at that on our city's website. And then finally, CDC recommendations. We're all aware that CDC has provided a new recommendation regarding masking inside, and so wanted to make sure that people understood that was a recommendation. It's not a new public health order, but people are, can, are able to make their own decisions regarding wearing a mask inside. So those were the items I wanted to mention, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Aaron, for that. So as far as the Park and Rec survey for ice rinks, so if I put in there that I wanted to see, I, I assume it has to be close to like a fire hydrant for filling and things like that?
I'm not, I don't believe that it requires that, but Kristin would know better, so go ahead, Kristin.
Yeah, she's nodding her head.
Yeah. Yeah, it should be near a fire hydrant. That's kind of one of the major-
Okay. Because otherwise, I'd pick Alder Jacobs' yard and go over for breakfast and then ice skate afterwards, so.
Ah, nice.
I'll fill it out that way.
I just mentioned that Alder Stocker's yard is probably going to be the next-
Mine has a slope to it. Otherwise, I would love it. Yeah, mine has a slope. Otherwise, I would love it. It wouldn't have before the sidewalk went in. It would have been flat enough, would have been flat enough to put an ice rink in there, but the sidewalk kind of took care of that. Okay. So on to referrals. So, I don't know, Alder Jacobs, did you want that as a referral, what you said before?
Yes.
Okay. So the referral will be to look into cutting a hole in the fence?
The, no, this is what I want. The three key words. The advisability, the viability, and the cost of connecting Major Way to the Aquatic Center.
Okay. Thank you. And I have a referral, although it's probably not timely. I would like to know, as far as bringing the public back into the building, what the council feels will have to happen for that to occur. And again, this, this could be one of those that falls under long-term look, the way things are going, and I don't know if there's a statute of limitations on a referral, but anyway, I would like to at least put that on the agenda to see what the, what the, I guess, situations have to be, or what's, what's the trigger points to make that happen. Okay. Any other referrals? Okay. If not, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Jacobs, second.
Okay. We have a move and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. We'll get ready for our next one.